I think that the mayor and I have had those different conversations. Other, I'm not the last set, but as city administrator, our role is to advise the governing body, the mayor included.
And it becomes a little.
Hello, this is Tom.
All right, Tom, I got you.
We're about to get started here. We haven't started yet.
Is the attorney on?
Let's see. Can't have the meeting without the attorney. I don't see an attorney here. Jared, do you mind giving a kentacall?
Hello.
Okay.
Okay.
Hey. Sorry, guys.
Going to call this meeting to the special city council meeting order. It's February 26th, Monday evening, 2024. We'll do roll call first. Mayor Protem Villa-Lobos, Councilmember McGovern.
Here.
Councilmember Siler. Councilmember McClabb.
Here.
And Councilmember Clinton.
Here.
And I'm Mayor Glace. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
And pledge allegiance to the flag of the state of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the good soul with liberty and justice for all.
And to the Texas flag, honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one in Jesus' name.
And for the invocation, dear gracious heavenly Father, thank you, Lord. Thank you for just bringing us all here tonight to make a very important decision. Lord God, please be with us and just guide us. And Lord God, thank you for the gift of salvation in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay. There are no public comments, so we'll just go right into our city council meeting. Discussion and possible action to deny additional funding to Freeland-Turk Engineering Group for their engineering services. And I'll turn it over to Jared.
Is it to approve or deny?
Yeah.
Or deny?
To approve, please.
You said to deny.
No, it says approve or.
No, you said that.
Oh, did I?
Some of the time, no.
We want to approve.
Yeah, so the purpose of tonight's meeting is as one agenda item to approve the contract for the engineering costs associated with submitting our project information form, the PIF, which is the first step in our Texas Water Development Board loan application. And so the engineer has already begun work. And they're projecting the total cost to not exceed to $25,000, of which roughly $7,000, just over $7,000 is subcontracted out to another engineering firm to do some of the design and cost estimating. We have spent roughly $5,000 to date. And we need to have a contract approved for this amount by the city council in order to make the submission, which is due on Friday. And we plan to bring the package back for council approval Thursday night.
So you said that we've already, Jared, that we've already spent $5,000 on this project?
Yeah, so that was a grave mistake on my part. So going into this was an understanding that. Go ahead.
No, I, I, I guess you're mentioning that because I hadn't heard of us okaying spending that amount or any amount. And so that's why I'm re-asking you about the 5,000.
So is it 25? Wait a minute, is it 25 plus five now? Is it 25 total?
25 total. And it's not, it's not firm fixed price. It's a, it's a labor hour sort of basis. And it's not to exceed 25. I don't expect it to reach that amount. And Tom could lean in and provide better insight on that aspect than I could. But how we got into today was city council and prior meetings over the summer and lead back to a year directed us to evaluate other potential opportunities for us to acquire a wastewater treatment plant on our own. We had actually been working on the task order since at least September. During that time period, we did approve the council, city council did approve a task order to Freeland-Turk for engineering services. I mistakenly did not recall correctly that that task order was for the mod application, that $2 million mod application that went to the bridge effort near Spring River. I had, I had was so wrapped up in working on this project that I had assumed that that was for the Texas Water Development Board PIF submission. I was wrong. So I've exceeded my spending authority by about $2,000. I have a purchase ability up to 3,000. They've expended roughly $5,000 to date on it. I apologize for that. It was done in good faith. I had thought we had a task order placed. We did not. In any event, the, the costs going forward are at least $7,000 for the subcontracted work being provided by another engineering firm, plus additional time, time and materials expended by Freeland-Turk Engineering towards the submission of the PIF. And that's covering the design, cost estimating, and other engineer requirements. The, the bulk of the documents actually going to still be done by the city staff.
I guess I got two questions. First question is, I guess it's a question for Lang.
Well, Lang is not involved in this.
Well, because, okay, he's not involved with this.
No, Lang.
I'll stand corrected. Okay, my question, who can answer this question? What are the odds of us getting this loan? What is it? 10% chance? Is it a 20% chance? Is it 50% chance? Is it a 60% chance like going to the lottery? We spent $25,000, we get 3 million, but is it 10%, 5% chance? I'd like to know.
I don't have experience supplying, applying for these programs. They are highly competitive, at least for the portion that is has a loan forgiveness. I know that's highly competitive. The rest of the program is still competitive. However, there's been a lot of money being put out there for clean water infrastructure. I mean, I think there's a trillion dollars was passed by the administration two or three years ago. That's starting to trickle in. So I think there'd be a little more movement on projects. I think our project has, our, our applications have scored very well. We're very competitive in terms of our average mean household income, which is lower than the state, which is goes towards you know, our competitiveness for the forgiveness. And also the project, I think, is highly competitive in the fact that we are a rural wastewater provider that's establishing a regional system that uses the latest and greatest technology for reuse and other things. The, the biggest inhibitor, I think, is going to be the cost and affordability. But I believe we're going to score very well on the loan forgiveness elements and double the.
If we get the loan, if we get the loan for first ones. Now, Nick, Nick just made a statement. He said, we got a low chance of getting. Are you guessing that or you?
I'm just guessing that just from the conversations we've had with, well, the individual that we talked to from Aqua, who is on the board, that is a very, very competitive loan for the forgiveness. I'm not too sure about the overall.
So we grant, so we really, we really don't.
But he's also in the business of selling treatment plants.
Sure.
Okay, okay. So I'll, I'll leave the, I'll let that one lie. But my next question, and I don't want to bring up past, the past too much, but I want to talk about that sidewalk. 13 grand. And I'm still not real happy with that, with Mr. Turk. I'll be honest with you. The $13,000 we applied for that sidewalk all the way from apartments over to the phase one. And we paid that guy $13,000. I heard the same thing, competitive and all that, and we didn't get it. So my question, this is my point.
One we haven't gotten.
But we spent $13,000. And I think, this is me talking. There has to be something in that contract. I mean, I, I don't understand, I'm not an engineer. But do we have to fill, have this whole thing designed? You know, all this engineering design, all this money spent to get a yes or no answer. Can we do a preliminary engineering? Our basic engineering drawings, and then we get, then we get the project? I don't mind spending all kind of money.
But that's what this cost, that's what this task order covers, is those preliminary drawings. They, they have to develop maps and project plan, detailed project plans. But it doesn't get into the, you know, construction level design, you know, this is like 0% design drawings, right? This, this is conceptual in nature, but it still requires some engineering to, to proceed. And the application itself requires documentation that requires a professional engineer stamp. And so we would have to engage in engineering at some level.
I understand.
If we went for this, no matter what.
I understand that. I understand. But going back to my point, I'm, I'm still upset about 13 grand, but. But I'm going back to my point, I was, I'm still upset with thirteen grand, but I'll let that go. But I would like to know, though, I mean, I mean, you can't give us a chance.
How many applications, how many applications for this grants?
Good question. Good question, that's a good question.
It's like three hundred, four hundred.
How many?
About three hundred, four hundred.
And how many, how many do they accept?
Um, it depends. Uh, it goes on the list, there's a rank.
How, how big the projects are, so they're allocated.
Is there, they approve or deny?
In the engineering services, we have a better chance of getting it. Because they know how to answer.
I guess my question is, I'm gonna be, this is the last thing I want to say about this. I guess my question, is there any way that we could? I mean, I don't mind paying the man, but man, it's it's kind of like going for the lottery. I mean, is there any way we can say, hey, Mr. Turk, it's gonna cost us whatever, twenty thousand, hey, hey, about if, you know, if we might charge us ten or whatever, and and do the basic, the absolute, the basic requirements, as you said, the kind of a conceptual plan, with something in there that, like, okay, if we get it, you get five thousand dollars more, you get ten thousand dollars more, a little incentive. So he has something in the game besides us. Like, he, he, he is set, he's gonna get his twenty grand or whatever. And we're, we're gonna be, we're gonna be the ones taking the gamble. He needs, I think, as much money as we give to that man, I think he needs maybe work it, work with us, that's just my personal thing.
Well, it's, he's, we're hiring him to do a job. And he's doing that job.
Back to, yeah, I understand.
My concern is that, why, why are we, you know, we, we, we talked about this for several months. A couple of months ago, when we started this ball rolling, and here we are, four days before the end, getting a bill.
Oh, no, he hasn't given us a bill yet.
Well, I understand, but now we're finally getting the quote?
Well, we've had him working on it.
I understand, but, you know, four days before, we've been.
That, that, that's, that's reflection on me and my mistake. That's not a reflection on our engineering firm. Uh, and.
Well, I'll give you, I'll give you shit if you want to take it, Jared, that's okay, I mean, that's fine, but um, I'm with Mr. McClabb on this, there's been several situations and interactions I've had with the man that, you know, I just don't like this um, this thought process, you know, this, this quote should have been presented to a at the beginning, you have an idea what the expense is gonna be. Now, we were first talking about this, my understanding was somewhere around ten thousand was the number, and now you've gone two and a half times that.
I think in the general.
It's a, it's a not to exceed limit. I think right now, we're guaranteed to be all in about thirteen. Maybe closer to fifteen, I'd be surprised, we can, I think this would be a good opportunity to for Mr. Turk to weigh in on what he thinks the final number might be. But the task order has enough ceiling on it to accommodate, you know, the staff work that goes into the PIF.
I just don't like, I just don't like us, I just don't like us spending fifteen K without even knowing that we're, like, what our shot is to get this grant, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I understand why we're doing it, and it's very necessary, but it's just like, it doesn't seem, it seems like the, we're, we're missing something here. Like, like, we've been talking about it, why didn't they give us a quote straight up? Or at least a flat fee, okay, this is, this is a flat fee to make this grant happen? I mean, I understand there's other stipulations, but it just doesn't make, not good business.
When we were originally looking at doing this, we were just going to do a treatment plan. And as we went through the process of this, of figuring out what would be the most competitive method of submitting this, the project scope changed significantly to where we're not just doing a treatment plant, but we're doing it a full-scale collection system across the entire city for better work, so that, that's, that's what's really driving a lot of this, too.
That's fair, that's fair.
And you're gonna see those maps in the read ahead.
So the, the next question I have there is, based on that HR bill that you upcharged on connections, you know, let's just say we get a, a loan here for, let's just pick round numbers, ten million dollars, okay, it's just, I know it's not gonna be that much, but let's just say ten. And we forgive, you know, seventy percent, we're, the city's on the hook for three million. How are we gonna get that three million back through connection fees? Is that gonna be plausible?
So we'll have eight hundred and fifty homes. And if we, and if we're paying three million dollars out of pocket, we, of a loan that we need to service, it's gonna be, you know, about, uh, let's see, that annual amount, let me change this. I'm gonna have a spreadsheet here, I'll get your number.
We should, we should have.
So our annual loan payment on three million dollars will be of roughly two hundred and twenty thousand um, to nineteen nine sixty-four. Two hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. And if we have a customer base of eight hundred and fifty, um, that total burden across the customer base, if it's equal, is about two hundred and fifty-eight dollars a year. So if you divide that by twelve.
Yeah, twenty bucks.
Equals this, yeah, it's about twenty bucks, so I think it's, there's obviously cost involved. Um, the, the rates will, will have to change and go up. But if you're looking at the rates of BVRT Aqua, which are approaching a hundred dollars.
Seventy-five, there you go. Eighty-five.
If you can bring me in a quote of seventy-five dollars.
Okay, what? Well, we already know it's not gonna take me.
The, the rate difference will be, you know, we're probably in the ballpark of fifty to sixty, and they're at the ballpark of eighty to a hundred.
Okay, so Nick brought it, Nick, Nick brought it up, McGovern brought it up, what about impact fees? What is the same?
So that's, that's going, that's going straight the entire debt service, my, by month fees. If we go, we're talking with David Price earlier today, his assumption that he uses as a planning factor is fifteen thousand dollars in impacts and cost for an LUE. So that kind of conformed the starting point of figuring out what our impact fee is, is probably gonna, it could be in that ten thousand dollar to fifteen thousand dollar range. If you come in and we have, let's keep it round numbers, ten thousand dollars, and then we have a thousand homes come in.
Got it.
Boom, there, that's cutting, that's cutting the total outstanding balance by a third.
So you're talking about.
Development on the way, that there's a potential that these impact fees could resolve that debt pretty quickly, depending on how fast the build happens.
Can, can we also charge people not inside the city limit a different rate? On the super.
I, there's no, there's nothing that prevents you from doing that.
The city.
Do they do?
The you definitely, you certainly could. I think it would, it could.
Politician, right?
And there's a political consideration there that the city council will want to, want to take into account when that time comes.
You know, I'm, but that is the um, the hidden impact fee for the people that were adding to the, to the system. But my, my second part of the question, but we answered that really well, that was, that, that, that noted down. I know it's not gonna be ten million, so I'm, I'm good with that.
It could be that, it could be that ten million. It, it, it might, I think the higher range is fifteen, I think it's maybe eight to fifteen.
Well, my, my next, my next point is, when we add the next level of service, i.e. i.e. the next, the, the next developer that wants to connect, how are we going to then, are we gonna be able to charge them a impact fee? Or is that HR bill that was passed last year gonna impact or prevent us from doing that?
We'll have to, we'll have to look at it, I, I don't know the language off the bill off the, off my head, well, something we'd have to consider down the road and how we, how we adjust for it. But if, even if, if the customer base alone goes from eight hundred and fifty customers or something like this to two thousand customers, obviously that the incidence of that debt on a monthly bill goes down. So if they have an extra, if we just double it, it goes from twenty, extra twenty dollars a month to ten dollars a month, and you double again, you know, goes from twenty down, down to five, and so it, you get a, as we achieve a cognitive scale, that debt service becomes a, a a lot lower.
I don't want to think about this, but.
Hey, Jared, on uh, on number six payments to engineer, where it says uh, the engineer's compensation shall not exceed twenty-five thousand dollars without authorization, um, is that uh, that doesn't include the five K that we've already paid him?
We haven't paid him anything.
Does this, does the twenty-five include the five K that you just uh, referenced at the beginning?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
We haven't paid him anything yet. We're asking for the money tonight. We just put the twenty-five thousand dollar cap on there, so that we didn't have to come back if it was higher, but right now, we don't think it's gonna be higher than fifteen thousand at the most. Because right now, he has spent, he has uh, spent five thousand dollars in time and and effort, but seven thousand, if you, if you all were to say no tonight, we wouldn't hire this other firm that's gonna do a lot of documentation.
I have, so my, my, my question right now, and I, I mean, doesn't seem like, are we gonna be able to use what he's putting together, these preliminary plans?
Yes.
If we don't get this grant, we can use it for another application? But this won't go to those ways.
Absolutely.
Okay, well then, then we have it in our arsenal.
Answer your, your previous question, not to misinform the council.
Yeah.
Last year, there was a hundred and twenty submissions. Some of the, one of the things that re-fires, that started this whole process and our desire to pursue it was that many of the cities who ranked the highest have a very similar system to ours.
We won't get it, I mean, this is a yearly thing, annual, annual application.
Yeah.
Um, however, timing today is, is, is entirely dire.
Yeah, because we.
Situation, circumstances, and challenges we face soon.
Well, ultimately, we can't say, I mean, I, this might feel, this means that we can't say no to this right now, we're kind of, our backs against the wall, really, so I mean, ultimately, we gotta vote on it, and we know how, we're, we're popular, so. But it is good enough.
The Water Development Board takes applications annually, you can wait till next year.
Don't wanna do that.
That's why we're not, that's why we're here, we don't wanna do that, right? You know, we don't.
Won't keep you working, Tom.
So if, if you don't mind, let me uh, let me weigh in on something here. One, one way to look at this whole process is that, you know, this is a very significant application. You're asking for significant funding to build a big system. Uh, but it's, it's the, it's only the start. Once the Water Board takes this application, uh, you're gonna start working with the representative, and uh, that program's gonna morph into something that A, you can afford, and B, that the Water Development Board likes and is competitive. And it, and it may look significantly different from what you submit today. It's only a starting point.
Right. Hey, Tom, Tom, it sounds like you've had experience with the Water Development Board?
I have.
Have you submitted for this application before?
I have, I assisted the city of Blanco. Uh, I pulled together a PIF for them on their water treatment plant. Uh, I went through this whole process with them. Uh, it, it takes time, this, this application's probably gonna take about uh, two to three years before it uh, plays out and is productive for everybody. It's, it's the beginning of a journey.
I keep going, so did Blanco get it?
Yes, they did.
Blanco, they did? So, you're, you're expert, in, in your expert opinion, what are our odds of getting this, this loan?
I, I think your chances of getting something is very good. Uh, I can't speak to the chances of you getting everything that you're asking for on this application.
You're referring to the forgiveness?
Uh, I, I can't speak to the forgiveness. Um, it's just um, I, I, I might, I might know a little bit better after Thursday and Friday, after we pulled everything together. But at this point, I, I really can't say, and I wish I could, but I'd be remiss if I did.
What, what is the interest rate?
Four percent as well, is what they tell us to use.
About four percent.
So I'm gonna ask, the twenty-five thousand that we can't exceed, that's just almost the amount of money it's gonna take to get the preliminary drawings drawn up and to get our toe in the door, but once you dig in more into the details of the drawing, then of course, that unfor, the grant will cost more from Turk and later, like, whatever it was, a max of what, fifteen percent or?
Yeah, so let me, let me speak to that. Uh, so what we are doing at this point in time is, is really a conceptual layout of the system. And I showed you that uh, the last time I was there. Uh, and uh, that concept has been refined in the last week or so, and that's the drawing that's in your package. Uh, that's good enough for us to do what I call a PIF level cost estimate. So the, the Water Development Board asks for uh, applicants to have a civil engineer uh, do a cost estimate and sign and seal it. They want it to be reliable. Uh, they don't want it to be in the ballpark, uh, and that, and that's what we're doing. Uh, the design, if, if you're awarded, we'll pre, proceed with detailed design that we can bid and all that. That is a completely separate process, much, much more expensive than, than what I'm asking for. On the twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, we're at five now. I, I think we're gonna land somewhere between of fifteen and twenty. And I just wanted an extra five thousand just to be safe in case, you know, we uh, ran into something this week that we didn't anticipate. So I think it's gonna be more around twenty. We'll try to keep the cost down as much as we can, but we, we have a lot to do this week to get this application in. And, 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 and also, uh, you know, I want to apologize for not getting this to you sooner, but uh, we didn't get the direction that we needed until the beginning of February, when Jared sent us his email. Then, uh, then we had to do a little work to conceive the system to understand the scale of what we were doing. Now we have that, and I'm able to give you an estimate.
So if, if the drawing that I'm seeing here is the drawing you showed us, and you say or estimated you've spent about five thousand dollars of your time, and it could not exceed twenty-five, so what is just a brief description of what else you have to do besides this drawing I'm looking at between now and the next few days? So, I mean, what, what more do you have to do that's gonna cost so much more?
It's, it's basi, it basically come downs, comes down to two things. Uh, one is the, the cost estimating effort. Uh, and that's shared between us and DCS. DCS is gonna do a cost estimate on the lift stations, on the wastewater treatment plant that we're proposing as new, and then on the reuse system that we're going to uh, establish where we convert all your ponds uh, to F, F1 holding ponds. And then we're gonna do the collection system, which is all the gravity mains and the force mains that have to be installed. That's the big effort that's left. There's still effort remaining to actually fill out the PIF form, collaborate with the city staff, and uh, write the project descriptions and answer the questions in a way that we can score well. And that takes a little effort.
Okay, so Jared, you just said it was gonna cost us twelve to fifteen, that was your estimation, correct? And Turk just said it's gonna be about twenty. It seems like there's a.
No, I said, I said it's a minimum of thirteen, probably in the ballpark of fifteen.
Well, okay, thirteen fifty, now we go to twenty. I mean, I mean, we, we're just a poor town here, I mean, every, well, that's true. I mean, we're here, we're here, we're here thirteen fifty, now we're here in twenty, maybe twenty-five.
How, how are we paying for this? Do we still have some grant money left, or?
Yes.
Some, some.
We're not paying out of general funds.
It's, it's what?
We are not paying it out of our general funds, we are paying it out of ARPA funds.
ARPA. Can we, can we get that price down to, say, fifteen, around fifteen, eighteen? Cause I'm afraid, when you, when you always say up to authorization is up to twenty-five, it's gonna be twenty-five most likely. You know, that's how it works in the real world, you know? Well, you know, I'd like to see it tied down a little tighter, and it's my personal thing.
It, you can tie, so in, in the contracting realm, when you have really tight requirements that are well-defined, you can do a firm fixed price um, contract. When you don't have well-defined requirements, it's a labor hour type, material type contract. Here, we do not have well-defined requirements yet, cause it's, it's an iterative process, so. I don't know, Tom, would you be willing to convert this, this task order into a? I don't know, Tom, would you be willing to convert this, this task order into a fixed price contract based on where we're at today?
No, there's too many unknowns. Like I said, I think it's gonna land somewhere between fifteen and twenty. If you're uncomfortable with twenty-five, I'd be happy to cut that back to twenty. But we, we've got an awful lot of work to do this week, and, and I, I wish I was at a higher comfort level.
So you'd be willing to go up to twenty maximum? Correct?
Uh, I, I'm willing to do that, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Take a motion. How, how, how much is left in our, our ARPA fund?
Over two hundred thousand dollars. That has to be spent by September.
Twenty-four, uh, twenty-four?
Yes.
Yes.
In seven months, six months.
Yes, we have to spend that this year. Is it the calendar year or fiscal year?
Fiscal year, that ends in September.
Is that what, is that what they said when they gave it to you?
Yep.
All right, well, I'm gonna make a motion. Uh, make a motion to approve additional funding to Freeland Turk Engineering Group LLC for engineering services for the purpose of completing the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, C W S R F Project Information Forms with the amendment of maximum spending of twenty thousand dollars.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a, a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Or are you ready to vote? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
Thank you, Tom. Thanks, Tom.
Do I have to get a vote from someone?
Yeah.
Oh, yay, yay, I think it all just blended in with.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, thank y'all very much, uh, City Council. If you don't mind, sometime in the future, I'd like to have an open discussion about some of the remarks that, uh, were made about our fees and how they're connected to grants and, and all that, cause I think there's some misunderstandings that, uh, need to be discussed.
That's fair.
That's fair.
Yeah, and then I, you know, just to like close, I mean, like, uh, it has to be initiated with the engineer from the city. He's not just saying, hey, I'm gonna do this. So it's initiated by our city administrator, by our mayor. So they're the ones that are doing it. So the man's is doing the job.
Hundred percent, okay.
Okay, wait, I, I have a, a question. So it just had to be completed in four or five days by March first, is that what we're saying?
Yeah.
So Turk is saying that within the next four or five days, he would have spent the money by.
Well, he's already spent a bunch of it.
Working on it for a month. Yes, we already owe him.
So the work that he's gonna do with the other consultant and all that, they should come to their conclusion and their drawings by.
Just another couple of grand, Thursday, every day. Two hundred and five dollars an hour, it's not hard to do.
Okay. That's all I got, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
I second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Thank you, guys.